Good morning, everyone. It's the 13th of July 2023 and it's the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, it's the sixth of 2023. I'll call councillor attendance and all are in attendance except for councillor Johnic. I call for apologies and I have a leave of absence from councillor Nicole Johnic and Nicole, councillor Johnic has requested a leave of absence from this committee for today, so I will move that and put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll now move on to the acknowledgement of country. If we city council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and the waters we share, we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. I now call on any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. There being none, thank you. And there is no business outstanding, so we go into item one, which is the confirmation of the minutes. So confirmation of the minutes for the meeting of the 8th of June. Any questions of council officers on that? In that case, I will move them. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any corrections, amendments? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item two, which is the Asset and Infrastructure Services Department Capital Delivery Report of May 2023. Are there any questions of council officers on this matter? No? In that case, I will move this. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. As for discussion, I just see a number of the projects that we've been, I guess this councils had sort of planned for the design back in our first year and it's lovely to see some of these works getting done now and being completed. It's great to see these works getting done, especially in this, I think, good weather at the moment. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Go on to item three, which is the Exercise of Delegation Report. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officers on this report? No? In that case, I will move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Fekner. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now come to the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report. May I ask for the relevant council officer for that one, please?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, City Development Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. Obviously, you've had a big announcement with the court case. Do you mind just giving us a summary of that?
Yes, certainly. There are quite a few things that have occurred since this report was published on the 18th of June. A large number of items that will need to be updated in the next report, but I can provide an update now. Speaking in chronological order, I suppose, the day after this report, on the 19th, we received the minister's decision on the oneless application. So the report makes reference to the judicial review process and that was determined earlier, but really the report left those items on the agenda because we hadn't finalised the matter, we hadn't received the decision. We have received that decision. The minister has decided the application in a manner that is largely consistent with the original decision made by council. So I think that is a good outcome. And as far as that judicial review process is concerned, that matter is largely resolved. The application has decided there isn't an appeal for a ministerial designation, sorry, ministerial call-in. And that decision's been made and finalised, so that will be taken off the list soon. The day after that, we received a much more significant legal decision, which was the judgment on the waste appeals. So all three were handed down, excuse me, handed down at the same time. And if, just going through the order, the first on the list is Landtrack. That application was one that was refused by the court. The refusal is quite in depth. It's a long read. I probably won't go through it all now, but it was one of the applications that was refused. Further down the list, Austin BMI was one of the applications that was approved, or it was the only application that was approved. Substantial changes were made to this application during the appeal process, which allowed the court to consider the proposal in a more favourable light. The application hasn't been finalised. Essentially, we're in the process of liaising with legal representatives to create conditions as ordered by the court. We don't expect this to be something that will happen quickly, to be truthful. It's a very complicated proposal. There's a large number of engineering environmental matters that were covered in the appeal that need to be resolved through conditions. So we expect to have a mention in court in August, but we probably expect the process to do, create the decisions to take a little while longer. And finally, in order on page four, Cleanaway. So the Cleanaway application was refused by the court. So that decision is in favour towards council. There may be an appeal of that decision made by the court. There is an opportunity for all three to be appealed, either by the applicant or the council. The likelihood of those applications being appealed is relatively low. It can't be entirely predicted, but the likelihood is relatively low, just due to the nature of the appeal being related to things like jurisdictional matters or errors of law and things like that. So we're likely to see that appeal period go through and we're probably unlikely to see much more from the Cleanaway matter, given the findings of the judge in that judgment with respect to the performance of the, well, the expected performance of the proposal and its impacts on the environment, being unable to be managed through conditions or otherwise. Those matters have been finalised as far as the main judgment being handed down and once we go through the appeal process, they'll eventually be removed from this report. There are obviously other outcomes or future outcomes. There may be future applications lodged that address the findings of the judges, or the judge in the judgments. So there's a lot of information about what was changed in the Austin BMI application to make it an acceptable use. The outcome is significantly different from the one that the council decided. The level of additional engineering and safeguards to manage the environmental impacts is just vastly different, as is the reduction in scale. So we're talking roughly 20% reduction in capacity of the landfill, reduction in overall height and things like that. So that said, the judgments provide a bit of a guidebook, I suppose, for the approach that other applicant proponents may take if they were to seek a favourable opinion on those sorts of things. So not out of the woods yet, to be honest, but for now, we've had a good victory in that, you know, two of the applications have been refused and the one that has been approved is significantly different from what we were looking at originally.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. When's the cut-off date for appeals?
I will have that written down, I think. I'll check for you. 1st of August.
1st of August.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr Bowles on this or other matters? No, thank you very much, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
I'll move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle. Going into discussion on those matters, one, obviously, we're delighted with the result of the call-in, but on top of that too, with the judicial review, I also note that the state had the opportunity to also ask for costs from council and they're not doing that, which I think is very magnanimous of them. And I do really appreciate that gesture from the state government, which I think is wonderful. Obviously, it's a really big win for us with Landtrack, Cleanaway and Austin BMI. Austin BMI have changed their offering substantially. I would hope, noting how the extensive matter that did go to court, I think it was the largest, the most complex matter they'd been to, P and E Court in Queensland, that Cleanaway and Landtrack do note that and they do respect the very exhaustive finding and it's a very good outcome for our community. Can I thank our council team for supporting my ass councillors, but also our community in the education and the whole process, because it was a very long and extensive process. And I know in council was many parts of the organisation CEO that worked together and worked with our community and with us. I think it's a phenomenal result that we had and it's a time to reflect that we all did work together as a community and as a council to really get a great outcome. And it really sets, I think, the pathway forward for us. This is what we, you know, set out to do when we first did the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive, that we wanted better outcomes for our community. And so it's a phenomenal result. It's an expensive one. It's nearly $7 million for that court case alone. But I hope it's an investment in our future. So I just want to thank everyone involved. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tully. Did you put your microphone on? Thank you.
I just wanted to raise an item and I should have asked Mr Bowles while he was here. So can I, we just go back there?
Thank you. Yes, there's usually an item you ask about Spring Lakes that you always ask.
No, no.
No? Mr Bowles, would you mind coming?
I want to show that I read more parts of the agenda than division two. You'll be familiar with this matter. It's the last one on the report, the division four, the Kelly Consolidated, or Yemeta Holdings Appeal. And I note, it says without prejudice, discussing discussions ongoing. The matter is listed for review on the 22nd of June 2023. Has that been progressed?
Just make sure I'm looking at the same one. Yep.
Appeal number 3200 of 2022. It's on our reports, it's page 68 of 68.
Yes, so that matter is actually being, there's a mention today?
Today.
Yes, so we, the order hasn't been made yet, so it'll probably be made later on today and I can provide an update if you like. We are continuing discussions. Fundamentally, that is the continuation of the process and today's hearing is an update and, well, not hearing, mention is an update on that with a future date to be set for, I believe that we're expecting that we may have some dates set for a hearing.
Okay. Justin, this is the main point of the query. In the appeal summary, it says this is an originating application made by Yemeta Holdings Proprietary Limited, which makes the following declarations and orders. Should the word makes be seeks?
I will.
Because the applicant can't make the order.
Yep, that's a good point. I'll take that on notice and that should be amended next time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr Bowles? Thank you. And before we just go to the vote, just to reiterate what a tremendous win it was and just encourage our community, continue to use the Ode Rubatement Task Force. That really helps us when we have discussions with other levels of government, but also in the courts as well. So based on that, I'll then put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item five, which is a notice of motion. And I sent out just a slight amendment to all the councillors and the committee clerk this, early this morning. And I'll read it out for the live stream, that this will be now a notice of motion of hotel and short accommodation, short-term accommodation action plan, and that A, that a hotel and short-term accommodation, non-residential action plan is prepared and presented to council in November 2023. And the action plan will focus on current and future demand for short-term accommodation, in brackets, non-residential. Ipswich's current short-term accommodation options, accommodation types and locations to best meet demand, and planning levers and incentives that can be used to drive construction of new short-term accommodation in Ipswich. So I move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekner. In speaking to it, the need to address the significantly, significant undersupply of short-term accommodation in Ipswich has been raised by this council and our community over some time. I think this is a piece of work that is well overdue and I'm keen to see it completed sooner rather than later, which is why I brought it forward as this notice of motion. Council's taken some small steps towards addressing this issue with discounted development application fees for hotels, our shop top living initiative and high-quality residential developments. This action plan is the next logical step in ensuring council is encouraging the development of hotel and short-term accommodation in our city and actively exploring the possibility of converting existing buildings into short-term accommodation. Based on the positive actions of other South East Queensland councils, I strongly believe the answer lies with the development industry and therefore council needs to position itself even more to put incentives in place and pull the relevant planning levers to bring forward this construction. Would anyone else like to speak to it? Thank you councillor Tully.
Yeah, thanks, mayor. I think this is an important motion before the committee and council in two weeks' time. The short-term accommodation is, or any sort of accommodation around Australia at the moment is regarded, I think, across the community as of being absolutely critical importance. And certainly the federal and the state governments are in a position probably to give greater effect to opportunities in our communities right throughout the state, but particularly in South East Queensland, particularly in our area, the growth area of Queensland, in South East Queensland. I think this is a good initiative so that we're on the front foot. There's very few communities in Australia where this is not currently an issue. And if we, if we are able to provide some input and some decision-making about how we as a local government can assist a short-term accommodation opportunities, I think that will be great for our community. Can I just ask, can I note the slight change? It says the original motion said by October 2023 and now it's in November 2023. If there was any chance that that report was available earlier, could we use the word by November 2023, rather than delaying it till 2023 if it was available for, for example, the October meeting?
I don't think it'll be available then, but I have no issues with changing the word in to by. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll just check with the second of that motion. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So if that's okay. Thank you. Thank you councillor Tully. Anyone else would like to speak to it?
I'm just speaking from the community perspective. It is something that is being quite frequently discussed, particularly with regards to the Ipswich Central revitalisation work. So I see this as a critical, you know, missing link strategically from council's point of view. And to go out there hard in the market has, you know, proved successful for, you know, other similar local governments. We look at the success that Gold Coast City Council have had when they've, you know, used the levers they have in their sphere of control to incentivise this sort of development. We often hear from event organisers around Australia that they would, you know, love to come to our city, but we don't have the short-term accommodation available for them. So, you know, this is very critical for our growing city and more importantly, for the success of our CBD. So I support this motion.
Thank you councillor Fekner. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Mazin?
I personally just need some clarification. Is the intention of this motion to complement or compete with the Economic Development Strategies Action Item? I find it curious. That hasn't been mentioned this morning.
Yeah, I wrote this up before seeing that, but I Yeah, well, I broke this up before seeing that, but I think the need is urgent. It's been on the plan and I'm not sure when the Economic Development Strategy Implementation Plan will be delivering it. And I think when I did see the copy of it, was it this week or last week, when it came, last week, it's, I think, in there saying that they're going to put on a consultant to work on something. So I think the need is now and a bit more urgent. So I think this notice of motion will provide that urgency.
All right. I just don't support the duplication of work that may not actually have alignment. So as long as that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
I found that's cleared up my great confusion this morning.
Thank you councillor.
Mayor, could I offer through you? Thank you. We as an organisation would be seeking to deliver on this motion, if it's resolved by the council in two weeks' time, under the auspice of the Economic Development Strategy. So this action plan would be a priority action plan under the auspice of that strategy, would be my recommendation for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No, I'll put those to vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. There are no matters arising. I have no procedural motions or formal matters. So the meeting is now closed at nine twenty-two. No, the next committee will be in 10 minutes' time. Thank you.